Okay.
Want to say it over again?
Yes.
We'll call the meeting of the Berlin School Committee April ninth to order. And the first thing on the agenda is the budget hearing, so I'm going to turn it over to Nadine.
Okay.
To get started on that.
Great. What I'd like to do is talk about the process that we went through for the budget for FY14. The administrators each submitted their own line item requirements. Yeah, sure. Bill's just turning the lights down here so we could see the perfect. That's great. Thanks, Bill. The teachers at the elementary level were, had submitted some resource needs by grade level, and actually that was done at the very beginning of the year. For those of you who are not familiar with the budget process, this actually starts back in October, and we do an initial rough draft as early as November, and we bring it forward to the school committee for its initial vote of approval in December. So they're really just starting off the year, and we're trying to think about what we're going to be doing the following year. So from there, Carol brought it forward to the administrative team. And the administrators met regularly to discuss the line items and to develop the initial budget that was approved earlier this year. I then met with the business director, and management solutions has been working with me quite regularly. We talk about any updates since the initial vote. Some of the updates could be from the initial vote, such as health insurance benefits on the region end. At the elementary end, we might be looking at when contract negotiations go into play, what that might look like. When we look at some of the things like transportation that we have to put into the budget, when we propose an increase in transportation, and then we get confirmation that the transportation might be a little bit different. So those kinds of things that we don't really know in December, and we find out as the years, as the year goes through. As well as items that we might see would be based on the governor's budget versus the House budget, and the Senate budget won't come out until after Memorial Day. So there's even more final adjustments to the budget in regards to what we'll get for state reimbursement that happen all throughout the year. So we can only at this point do an educated guess of those funding sources. So what we did in preparation for this budget is we looked at everything as a level funded source, because we don't know what the state's going to give us for our reimbursements and so forth. So that's what this is, that's what this budget here is based upon. When you look at the estimated revenue projections for FY14, just to give you an idea, you'll see the blue that's up on the top is $300,000. That's school choice. Circuit breaker is about $10,000. Preschool, we get funded here, is about $15,000 for our preschool programming. The grants is approximately $108,000 is what we, and then that again is level funded. That's what we received in FY13. We're proposing that that's what we'd be receiving in FY14. Then you look at some of the non-resident tuitions. School lunch is about $53,000 we take in for school lunch. These are all additional funding sources that we look at to support the budget. And then chapter 70 is about $500,000. And the preliminary local contribution for the school from the towns is $2.6 million. And my screen doesn't look like that, so I guess I'll have to turn it. When I look at the revenue sources, one thing that I think it's important for people to realize is that if you look at the balance of June 30th of 2012, school choice, for example, is $422,000. What schools do, which is a little bit different than what towns do, is towns, as they get the money, they spend it the year that they get it. What schools do, because we have to set our budgets and get our voting in the process so early, what we do is we take the funding in, we hold it into our revenue accounts, and the following year we use it. And that's how we know and how to judge and estimate how much our budgets would be worth, because we know what we have in our revenues that we can use to offset the budgets. So for an example, in FY last June, at the end of last June, we had about $422,000 in our school choice revenue account, what we took in. For FY13, we projected to use 205,000 of that money. I'm sorry, received 205,000. We projected to use 300,000. For this school here, we're using $300,000 of that money, which is giving us a projected balance of 328,000. What we're thinking, again, level funding, looking at using the same amount that we received, using 300,000, we're down to 233,000 at the end of FY14. So I guess my purpose in explaining this to you, and if you look across the lines, you can see that in a two-year span, we've gone from a total, this is a total of all of these, which is for those at home. School choice, circuit breaker, which is your reimbursement from out-of-district placements. So to give you an example, if you, and I'm just going to use rounded figures. If you have a student that is in an out-of-district placement for special needs purposes, and let's say the tuition is $100,000. To round up figures, just to make it simple for people, you get reimbursed on top of your four times the foundation budget. So four times foundation for students would be about $40,000. You deduct the 40,000 from that 100,000, you're left with $60,000. You get reimbursed, if this year was it 42%? 42% of that $60,000, which is approximately $28,000, is what you're getting. Out of that $100,000, you're getting about $28,000 back. The rest of it, the towns have to pay for those, that tuition cost. So just to give you an idea, that's what circuit breaker is. It's that reimbursement amount you receive. Then you have your preschool, your non-resident tuition, your grants. Full-day kindergarten, you had $584 left in there. We no longer tuition kids in for full-day kindergarten. It's now a free full-day kindergarten for our local residents in Berlin. And then you have school lunch, your after-school programs. So with all of this going across, last year, at the end of 2012, you had $483,000 in your revenues. After two years of doing this process in our projections, you'll have $313,000, which means that we're actually using more of our revenues than what we're taking in here to offset the balance of the budget. So we have to be careful of that. We have to watch, watch how we're using those funds from year to year. But this is a reduction of about $170,000 based on projections and using level funding. This is a template that shows you where our chapter 70 funding and our chapter 78 has been throughout the years. And you can see that in FY8, you know, it was going up, and then this is in FY09, and then FY10, and then FY11, and we're looking at things being pretty much level funded for the, for this year. This is a great example of your school choice and charter and tuitions. And if you look at back in FY4, you had about 10 students that you were receiving in as school choice for Berlin. If I go all the way over here to FY12, it says 22.2. I don't know what .2 of one individual is, maybe an arm, I don't know, but we have 22.2. For FY13, we had 35 students coming in. We had 10 students in FY12 leaving, and for FY13, you had six students reported as going out in school choice. So your school choice in is much higher, but I need to explain that those are two separate programs. You have your revenues, and then you have your costs, and those are not the same program. We're looking at, on our budget, our revenue is what we use in our budgets, is our revenue services. The budget categories, in order to see how we actually fund, where are we actually funding our budgets? Your 73% that you have there is your instructional services. Your 6% is administration. 12% is your operations and maintenance. And then you have other school services is at 9%. When we look at the increase of costs for the FY14 school year, we're considering a curriculum director, and I put .25 FTE, because we're really looking for a full-time curriculum director for next year. The district has not had one for three years, and it's very much in need. I think if you talk to all of the teachers, I think they would be in agreement that it's nice to have an additional resource to talk to on a regular basis. The curriculum director is stated here in Berlin at .25 FTE, because Berlin's budget pays for 25% of that salary. 50% is paid out of the region, and then 20, another 25% is paid on the Boylston budget. And that's how the breakdown is for all central office, is 25% from each of the elementary schools and 50% from the region, because you have the middle school and the high school. So it's a 25% for each school, if you were to look at it that way. Legal services, a 10% increase in the cost. Technology, 30% increase. Supplies of material, a 30% increase. Transportation, a 10% increase. And a BCBA is an increased expense, and that's .4 FTE. And you'll see how it will offset in a minute. But the board-certified behavior analyst actually works hand-in-hand with a school psychologist. And you have a school psychologist position that's actually going through retirement for this year. And so at the end of this year, so for FY14, we're looking at a .5 school psychologist and a .4 board-certified behavior analyst. And they actually work together, because they have two different strategies of meeting all the needs for children with social and emotional needs or behavioral needs or anything in that aspect. School expense decrease. We are looking at reducing a sixth-grade teacher, and we're also looking at reducing a kindergarten teacher. However, we're thinking that this could also potentially be a teacher at another grade level, and that really depends on your enrollment. In Berlin, it's very tricky, as you know, when we looked at the census back in January, and we were looking at all of these budgets, we're looking at 15 students in kindergarten. We currently have 21 students enrolled in kindergarten. So, you know, we need to look at where those numbers are going to actually end up. We've had a couple of students in some of the other grades that have actually recently moved out of our district that could make some of those other classrooms smaller, and they might be small enough to combine into one. Somewhere, we're looking at reducing one teacher for next year. So each grade will have two classrooms, but there'll be one grade that will have one, and we're not sure where. And I'm just very happy to hear just tonight from Karen that our preschool program is actually completely full. So that's a very exciting news to see. For also, I just spoke to you about the .5 school psychologists. We're eliminating two pair of professionals. A .1 art teacher, which a .1 is equivalent to a half day of a decrease over a course of a week. And then the physical education teacher and .5 on the special education teacher. Heating of the building, a decrease of 10%, and maintenance of the building, a decrease of 10%. How that came about is the budget, we've looked at not only just what the budgets are and looking at increasing over the budgets, but actually a trend of what we've seen that was actually spent and utilized over the previous years. And then with increasing over the previous years, actually in fact caused it to be a decrease in what we are looking at in our current budget. FY, I'm sorry, for a four-year budget comparison, what's a little bit tricky is this is not quite apples for apples, because what we're looking at is your FY11 budget to FY13 budget. You can see there was about a $30,000 increase. However, for FY14, the huge decrease is also because we are shifting our sixth grade up into the region. So that's a big portion of that, but also the reduction of one of the other teachers in the building and some of those related arts teachers being reduced. The current district needs that we are addressing for the budget is, like I told you already, the .25 FTE for our curriculum director. Also, the curriculum instructional supplies is the revision of the new curriculum materials for ELA, math. ELA means English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. We have a large need to refine and purchase those instructional supplies in the curriculum in ELA and math immediately. The science will be working on with our staff next year. We're hoping to begin the discussions of social studies, but won't be purchasing the new curriculum until the following year for social studies. Reason being for that is because we now have the new Common Core standards, and we need to revise and review what we have, how they are in alignment with our standards, and how we, how we need to support. We just had a group of teachers today, for example, that was, that were looking at the new writing component and trying to develop, decide whether that would be an appropriate tool for next year, in which case we need to purchase those materials for our writing and improve and increase our writing. What you find is that the teachers have a lot of knowledge and a lot of background knowledge, but as the Common Core standards have changed, we need to support them with the supplies to go along with that change in the curriculum. So that's really the focus on that line. Also, our technology devices, we need to be updating and or replacing a lot of our technology. We have a lot of requirements that we're going to be doing with our teachers and expecting with our teachers, and a lot of it is computer-based. We need to make sure our teachers have up-to-date computers. Up at the middle school and the high school, they, every teacher has a laptop that they're able to take home, do their work, do their grading, do everything on the device, and their planning and their curriculum alignment. We need to be able to support the teachers in that capacity as well in their elementary levels. So we're looking at how we can try to find ways of providing technology so all the teachers will have a laptop over time. If we don't get it in one year, we can be looking at that in our technology plan. And then the new report card distributions, we have a group, I'm very proud to say, we have our kindergarten, first grade, third grade, some fourth grade teachers that are going to be piloting this semester, this trimester, with a new report card system. And it's going to be on Power School, because right now, a lot of the teachers either do them by hand or they do them in a way that is on a disk, but it's not compatible, where it's web-based, where it transfers over and goes to the next spot for the next year. So this is going to be a big change, and we're really happy that we have so many teachers that were willing to pilot. But by having so many teachers that are willing to pilot this new report card system also validates the need, the need for change for report cards and how the teachers really want to see this change happen, and the streamlining. Right now, they have to do also at the end of the year, a summary sheet, and it's a lot of time-consuming, it's a lot of paperwork. They're not going to need to do that anymore with this system, because everything's going to be in the system throughout the year. It's automatically going to go. Their cumulative files are going to be right there on the computer and websites. So it's a lot of work that they're doing, that they're doing naturally that they're now not going to have to duplicate their efforts. It's already going to be in the system, and they're not going to have to do that summary at the end of the year. So that'll be great. And also, the additional BCBA that we just spoke about. Technology needs is a huge piece for me that I see, is not just in Berlin, but in all three districts, and the need for a technology plan. We have, Palmera has developed a technology committee that's looking at the technology plan. It's supposed to be giving me a two- to three-year plan that we can be looking at and using as we start to prepare our budgets. So we're going to start to replace our technology needs. Educators must have their own computers and not to be shared. Some have to share them with students, and there's an issue with that with confidentiality and for instructional purposes. If teachers need to do things on instruction, but they need the teachers, the students to use the computers, it's just not a balance for everybody's needs. Also, we'll have smart boards in every classroom in the fall. Either we'll be moving some from current classrooms, or they'll be purchased, or even from Tohonto, there were a couple, I believe, that were on the, that were removed that are ready for classroom installation. iPad carts, they've begun to purchase for various classrooms and interactive instruction, but it would be great to have more students on the iPads and working one-to-one with technology. The new student information system program, like I said to you, we're no longer going to be using iPass and will begin using Power School. I think the elementary schools, it was a little bit more sporadic on the use of the iPass and what will happen. But by having also the smart boards, which will be a great option, is with the smart boards, having Power School, the teachers will have the students' names and like a, it looks like a classroom chart. And the students will be able to come in, identify themselves, and tap on the smart board in the morning as they come in. Teachers do a quick glance verification and submit, and immediately the attendance is already done. And it goes, automatically goes right to the, to their office. So it's going to just streamline everybody's efforts and keep things clean. Professional development, new educator evaluation system. A lot of these that I'm going to talk to you about right now are really state mandates. And these are a lot of things that we have no choice, that we have to do. It's the new educator evaluation system, and just to give people an idea of what that looks like, currently on a teacher's contract, the evaluation is one paragraph. This is now going to increase 26 pages to their educator contract, because that's how many pages there are in the educator evaluation. That's how complex this new educator evaluation system is. So we need to make sure everybody understands every process to that educator evaluation system. The curriculum alignment, again, we started talking about that earlier. They started working on the ELA and the math. Next year will be the science, and then we'll be looking at social studies. We also have to assist with our related arts classes, our art, our music, our PE. We have to look at all of those components in the curriculum. Retail is another piece that the state has mandated that every teacher, in order to be, have their license renewed after 2016, will need to have a 48-hour course completed for the retails and be certified through the retail program. And that's for teaching students with English Language Learners. And because we don't have many students that are ELL students, we are in what they call a third cohort. And that means that not until FY15 can we even get teachers or administrators educated and trained, which means FY15 and FY16 is when we have to get all of our teachers certified. We have to allow for substitutes in those two years to cover, to allow teachers the 48-hour training that they need. So it's, it's a very complex component that we need to be looking at as a group. The next pieces are some of the changes that we need to look at. The student support team process, when a student is at risk, there is a process. Some people call it the IST meetings, and we call it the SST meetings. And that means that a group of professionals will sit together, and sometimes they include a parent in those meetings, depends on the process and where they're at in the process. But they talk about the students struggling and/or some interventions that need to happen and what that needs to look like to avoid the need, maybe to test a student into special ed, because you might find other interventions that work. Sometimes it causes a need to go and to referral for special education testing. So what we need to do in our system is all three districts do it very differently, and then it's not consistent. So we need to look at that process. Over the summer, the administrative team will be working a little bit on that student support team process. And then what we'll be doing is bringing it back to the schools for next year for review with the schools to see how we can get everybody on the same page for that. The new report card system, like I said, we have some piloting this year, but they'll be going into the pilot, and we'll be going full force into Power School in the fall. The new student information system is that Power School system, so we'll be doing training on report cards, but also on how they can use. The student information system is also for disciplinary, it's also for attendance. So there's many different aspects to that. And then benchmark assessment systems. We started with an assessment study group this week in looking at benchmark assessments of tests that need to be done three times a year. And we need to be consistent with K through 12 of what we use for our benchmark system. And we need to make sure that it's also in alignment with the needs of the Common Core standards. So currently, we have various benchmark assessments that are done, but they're not consistent. Not all teachers use the same, not all grade levels are using the same. But we have a lot already there. So the first step that we've done with our assessment process already is everybody on the team will be reviewing a different K to 12 benchmark assessment process. And we'll be bringing it back to our assessment study team and talk about the research that they found. And we're going to weigh out the pros and cons to determine which ones we want to pilot next year and try. DESC wanted us to state by the end of September that which benchmark assessments we will be using, and they just actually lifted that instead, that we just need to know there's a plan in place of what you're piloting at least for next year. So that's, that's good, because you don't want to rush into that. You want to make sure we're making the right, sound decision, so I'm glad we don't have to rush. Data analysis and changes of instruction, that's another piece that's part of their evaluation. It's really understanding the data, what do you do with that data? And how does your instruction change based on the data that you are finding? Some teachers are very comfortable with that, and some teachers need more support with that. So we need, we want to make sure that we're supporting all of the teachers and getting more comfortable with that data analysis. The 11 essential conditions of school effectiveness have always have to be at the forefront of everything that we do. That is what the state looks at when they are reviewing districts to determine whether you're level one, two, three, or four, when they decide to come in for a review. They'll be looking at your 11 essential conditions. Peer learning walkthroughs, I'd like to start introducing that next year just as a training purpose, but that is only if we can figure out how we can do all these other pieces. If that has to go through a following year, I'm okay with bringing that through in FY15. That's a very important piece for teachers to be able to see each other's work. The way, in my experience of what we've done, is you start the training where you bring elementary teachers to the secondary level, and you bring secondary teachers to the elementary level, so that they're not learning in their own environment with teachers that they work with on a regular basis. You're better off to have more objective components. And it's always an eye-opener for elementary teachers to see secondary classrooms and secondary teachers to see elementary classrooms. It's always a great exercise. Teachers really started asking for that after they started doing it the first time. They were a little nervous in other districts, so I'd like to bring that forward here. Curriculum director, again, is a current unmet need that we're hoping to implement for FY14. Additional coaches and team leaders. What I'd like to do is, I hear from many districts that they're in awe that we don't have an ELA coach. We don't have a math coach. We don't have a science coach. So I'd like to look at some research about how do we use coaches? How do we look at team leaders in our elementary schools? I know that in high school, you have department heads. Middle school, the middle school approach is a team leader approach. But in elementary schools, they don't have coaches, but they also don't have team leaders. So what does that need to look like, and is it something that the teachers? You know, sometimes you can have a teacher in the school that's actually a teacher, but also the coach. And sometimes that's even better than having somebody who's not teaching on a regular basis and to be a coach. So I'd like to look at that with, with the schools and research that. Also, educational technology coach. This is a person that goes into the classrooms to assist teachers with various technology. We are moving so fast in the 21st century with technology that it's very hard to keep up with technology. I mean, I was just really excited for the first time to see some of the stuff on my iPhone that I could use, that I had no idea my iPhone had capabilities of. And I use my iPhone every day. So we need somebody who's really a technology specialist. And this is not a technician or your coordinator. They have their jobs of what they're doing every day, all day. This is somebody that actually goes into the classroom. Let's just say Bev, for example, is teaching a kindergarten classroom, and she wants to incorporate technology. If I was a technology coach, I'd go in and I'd talk about what that lesson looks like. We'd work together, and then I'd be in the classroom with Bev, and we'd be We'd work together and then I'd be in the classroom with Bev and we'd be teaching that class together with the use of technology. Bev just learned how to use a certain technology piece and then she can go off on her own and continue that or something else comes in. There's so many different pieces of technology that we could be using with our students that we don't have. Curriculum materials for students, again, beginning in FY14. And then we're trying to put a plan in place for FY15 and 16 and so forth. And also our sufficient computers and iPads. So what I'd like to address here is what the school committee has already voted on in Berlin is an increase in the, when an increase of the region budget was originally at $903,000. We had estimated Berlin to have 40% of that budget. And the Berlin share for the regional increment would have been $361,320. With the Berlin Memorial School budget change of a negative $168,000 and the health insurance budget change of the town, on the town side of $30,000, also on the town side of unemployment budget change of $46,000. That brought a total projected increase for the town of Berlin's budget of $208,237. This is what the school committee has already voted on. The current recommendation for Berlin Memorial is, and the region school committee has already voted on this component of the increase for the region of $730,583, which is a difference of about $170,000, am I right? A decrease of about $170,000. But what has changed is Berlin's estimate is now at 41%, not 40%. What's happening is with the new region going up, so now you have seven through, six through 12 instead of seven through 12. And also some of the Boylston enrollment numbers are decreased, but Berlin has stayed pretty steady. It's caused an increase to 41% contribution, which is at $299,538. The Berlin Memorial School budget has a decrease of $159,000. The health insurance budget stays the same on the town and the unemployment, the same at $46,000, which would show a projected increase for the town of Berlin's budget at $155,417, which is actually a decrease from your $208,000 of approximately $53,000. I was adding my head pretty quick. Good? Okay. So what you're looking at is 1% more on the overall contribution, but it's still a decrease. And again, this unemployment is a worst-case scenario of that $46,000, as well as the health insurance is a worst-case scenario of $30,000. So that's what we'd be recommending for, at the end of our school committee meeting after the budget hearing. Andy, would you like to explain this sheet?
Sure. If you, in looking at the last slide, what that was comparing was budget to budget. But as far as the overall FY14 preliminary projected impact for Berlin, we need to look at the Berlin Memorial budget and then the assessment. That's what it is at the town pace for the region. So the operating assessment is what's down below. Comparing, we still have the projected net total change for Memorial School of the negative 144, 122. And then the net projected change for the assessment down below is the net projected change of 357, 357. And then when you net that with the Memorial School budget change, you get an overall net change for operations of $213,235. So it's a net increase when you look at the assessment versus in the Memorial School budget, where the other slide was doing budget to budget.
Right. So, and then I just want to also just clarify that when Andy is referring to the 144 decrease, he's not just talking about the school budget. The school budget's $159,000 decrease. So 144 is based on the unemployment and the benefits. Okay, so that's why this brings it down, because he's putting back in here the town cost. So when you're looking at the Berlin Memorial change here, this is also including the town's impact. So that's not just the school's budget difference, that's also your town impact difference.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said about what outside means.
FY14 outside.
FY14 for the region, FY14 outside is, there are two components to spending on education, net school spending and non-net school spending. Apparently, the parlance here has been there's inside, within allowable foundation spending and outside. So outside is non-net school spending, which would be debt and for the regional retired teachers' health insurance.
So this is really, the title is kind of screwing me up. Berlin Memorial School Assessment.
Right here?
Yeah.
That's the assessment for, your understanding, it's Berlin, it should be the town of Berlin.
The town of Berlin assessment.
Assessment for Tohonto, that's correct.
Because there's no assessment for Berlin Memorial School.
And that is it. So I just want to thank everybody and I will open it up to any questions. So I don't know if there's any. Any questions? No questions? How about out here? Any questions? Whoa. Light camera action. Any questions? Okay.
Just thought of it. So the difference between the school committee voted budget and the current recommended budget, just briefly.
Yep. So right here, what you had voted for town Berlin increase was $208,237. Where now I will be asking for an increase of $155,417. So we have decreased, the decrease has come from the regional end. So in other words, your elementary school budget for Berlin was at 2.496193. For here, we're looking at 2.505155.
Okay, so.
And what's changed in that difference is I had eliminated .2 in your music. I have left .2, that .2 back into the budget. I did not reduce the music components at all. Also, the change in there is that you originally had .15 in your budget for curriculum director. I made it .25 instead of .15. So that was a full-time position. Let's see. I think that's, that covers that $10,000 difference. It's about $9,000 more.
So that is the difference between the 208 and the 155.
Right.
Those are the changes that have happened to get from one to the other.
Right. So for tonight, what you would be voting for tonight is not this. This is just showing the overall. What you'll be voting for tonight is actually this budget up here, that 2.505155.
Okay.
Correct? All right. Carol?
When you talked about potential of maybe having two kindergartens, depending on the number, because you're not exactly sure yet, but you'd have to let a teacher go in another grade level. What would be that class size? Like what are we looking at? A class size of 30 or 28? I mean, is it a large?
About, no, we're looking at about maybe 26 kids. And the up. What we've, what we've been talking about is that it makes much more sense to have larger numbers at the upper grades than at the lower grades. So if we were to do that, we'd be looking at somewhere in one of those, like upgrades being three, four, five. It makes more sense. And we talked about when you have, you know, 20, 25, somewhere around there for kids in a classroom at that upper level, there's a lot more in-depth discussion and inquiry that they can be doing at the younger level. You still do that, but you're still trying to teach them to think pair share. You're still trying to teach them that where at the upper grades, it becomes more intrinsic. And so we talked about the in-depth component of that. We don't know which grade yet because we're still looking, numbers are just changing. Every week, Carol and I are talking about this number's changed or that number's changed. So it's very, very fluid. And so that's, we're not sure. But that's what we're looking at somewhere in that number range. Right now, we have 21 in our kindergarten. If it stays at 21 in the kindergarten, we'll keep, most likely keep the 21 in the kindergarten. If it's, if it looks like we're going to get more, then we'd say it would make more sense to keep that smaller and make one of the other classrooms bigger. It's very hard in Berlin because you guys are all so close to needing two schools, two classrooms, to bringing it to one classroom. And a lot of that is because through the years, the way school choice has run and the way that's kind of come in. But when you look at your per pupil expenditure and how it's so much higher, when you, when you look at, you know, you read on the DESE websites and we look at everything. When you look at your per pupil expenditure, you're paying more money for teachers than you're actually getting in for our school choice money. And that's what's making it look like it's so high. It's not that you're rich with all these resources. We know in the classrooms, you're truly not, right? So it's not because of that, but that's why it's looking that way. Because you're paying more money for having your school choice students in than what you're actually getting.
And I'm going to ask another question, but I apologize.
No, no, please.
I couldn't see it up there on my paper. I need new glasses. But we had talked before at another school committee meeting about halftime assistant principal and Carol being the halftime curriculum coordinator. Are you now suggesting that we have a full-time principal?
A full-time principal and a full-time curriculum director.
Okay, and so that's in, I apologize.
No, that's good. That's a good question, yeah. So that's why the only change you saw there was the curriculum director because you already had full-time principal. So that wouldn't be a change for you in that FTE, if you will. Yeah. Yes, please.
What is the most you would have in a classroom, for a classroom size?
Well, you know what? We were talking, actually, we talked about this at the BUSS meeting. And, you know, school committee really determines when we give them the numbers, whether that's feasible or not. They go by our recommendation. I will tell you that, you know, over 25 is really kind of pushing it for me in my comfort level. I think that in the higher grades, I would say honestly, 20 to 25 is a nice size group of kids. Anything over 25 is kind of pushing it, but when you're in the higher levels, you can, like, I'm talking like 4th grade. If you go like 26, you're still okay. You would just end up needing to rearrange your supports in that, in those classrooms to make sure that there's other, you know, aid support facilitating or however you look at that with the numbers. But I wouldn't go, I would say, to me, 20 is a nice size. 13 is too small for your classrooms, too small. You're not getting enough diversity in your classrooms at that level. And there's a value to having 15 to 20 kids in a classroom. There's a lot of value to that. I would never want to sit here at a school committee meeting or in public or anywhere to support 30 kids in a classroom. I would never do that. So if we look like numbers are getting too big, I would have to be talking to the school committee of, we need to look into other options. But when we set our budget, we set our budget based on the December numbers. And that's what's hard because a lot happens between December to September. So we're, we're taught, we talk weekly about what are the numbers looking like? Any changes going on? What are we looking at? So, but in kindergarten, to have 21, you have two adults there all the time. But you'd be looking at trying to put supports in other places if you, if you need it. You also have to look at the level of need in each grade level. Because some grades, you might have more students with special needs that need more support. You might have some grades with less special needs that might not need as much support. So you also, it's not always just about the number. You have to look at the needs of the students in each grade level, too. So we're, we're talking regularly. It's always in our mind.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yes, Deb, please.
I'm not a time resident.
No, that's okay. You're a teacher.
In relation to the, the class size issue, would you look at the percentage of students in a class on IEPs when making that decision? Because one of, that's one of the things I noticed earlier in the presentation, that we're reducing to paraprofessionals. So if you were to take a class that has a high number of IEP students and combine it, could other options be looked at? You know, maybe the right answer would be to combine them, but provide aid support. I don't know.
It also have compliance issues with the law as well. So we always have to look at those special education regulations. And that's why we have Karen in the mix with our conversations as well to say, you know, what are you seeing? And, and we also have the special education coordinator that we talk to on a regular basis as well. Karen meets with them regularly, weekly she meets with them and they do a follow-up. And so everybody's really, behind the scenes, really kind of thinking about all of this. It's not just, we wake up one day and go, hey, let's do that and it's done. So I promise you, we don't do things that way. Yes, please.
I just wanted to add something about the pairs that are going. They're just like the sixth grade teachers that are moving up to Tohonto. There are some para positions that are moving too, but you'll have less students, we all have less pairs. So there's not a net loss to the district, it's just moving them up to Tohonto.
Yes?
That staff change number on that, is that, does that include all these school expense decreases?
So, so very good question. This is a contractual salary increase. That's an estimate right now because our staff contracts are done as of this June. So all we can do is estimate. But that is, what we do is we put in there, here's our teachers, contractually, that's the increase. And then when you look at the staff changes decrease, that's compensated for the decrease. Okay. Chris, do you have another question?
Ruth and I are trying to figure this something out.
Please.
So we voted last time, 2496193?
Yes.
And this time, we're going to vote 2505155?
Yes.
So the number's going up.
At the elementary level, because of the positions I explained to you that I. That, so it ends up being about 11, nope, about a $9,000 increase. Those salary changes that I discussed. And I can explain the music, why that increase is there the way it is, is because, or it's not an increase, it's keeping it the way it is. Since the beginning, what we've done is I've met with our elementary music teachers and chorus teachers. And we put together a schedule of what the program looks like now. We put together, they put together a schedule of an ideal program, what it would look like. And then we talked about what is the reality of what it is that we have now. And this is not the year to expand on programming. But it's the year, because of the whole transition and so forth, it's not a year to expand it. But it is a year to look at keeping the programs as level as we can to what we have. My understanding of how the chorus component and the music component run before I met with them was quite different than after I met with them. So after a lot of discussion and looking at the classrooms and looking at how things need to evolve, it really would require that that music stay at that level. If we decide not to have that, then I would bring a music program. If the school committee decides to vote the 2.49, like you had previously, which is the $9,000 difference, then those, that position, I would have to, I would have to cut from the music program, those point, that point, too.
Well, I think that townspeople have really stated how important the music program is to them.
I think that's something they really valued. You know, I, I, I feel like we've listened to their concerns. You know, I mean, obviously, the teachers have worked together to try and come up with new scenarios. And I think it's probably positive, then, you know what I mean?
Now you have one, just a comment, really.
Sure.
When you go back to page two, trends of revenue sources. And as we've known over the years, those of us that have been on the school committee for a while, the school choice numbers, the first upper left column is four two two three eight eight.
Yep.
When you go down that column to the June thirtieth of thirteen, it's three twenty-eight one twelve.
Yep.
When you go down to the June of oh fourteen, it's two thirty-three eight thirty-six. So at the rate we're going, what do we have? Two more years where we can add additional money for school choice to the budget?
Well, I think what you need to look at there, that's a good point. But I think what happened, if I go back even further in years, a lot of times what I saw was that your school choice money, you were building the, the rev, that revenue pocket and not using it as much. And so what we have to look at is now that we are, the goal is you roll over what you take in your year.
Right.
And so what's happened here is that somehow you've rolled over more than you've taken in over the previous years because it wasn't used as much. It was like this was really, you were building a capacity.
Was there a correct percentage of like that size budget? Or is there any protocol to?
Well, usually, if you take in, in my experience, and Andy can probably speak to this further, but in my experience, if you take in two hundred five thousand, the following year, you're going to spend two hundred five thousand. So now we're getting to that level of that's about what you'll be using for your, for your funding. So you, you just have to balance this each year. But I'll let Andy speak further.
That, that would be, you know, from putting out an auditor, had a recommended practice, always using what you have in arrears. But then even if you look at on the general government side, and David can speak to that from his experience as a city treasurer, the recommendation is that you have five percent of your budget in reserves.
Right, yeah.
So five percent of our budget is?
About a hundred fifty thousand. You have three hundred thousand.
And we were for a little while, this is years ago, but we were for a little while, doing it one year behind. So we have two years in. But we have now gotten to the point where, yes, we're down to doing it that particular way. But when you see the numbers go down, you can see, you know, you can imagine the concern.
Yeah.
I know at the region, we have the same issue.
Right, all of us have the same issue. But I think, I don't, I actually don't see it as an issue right now at this, at this point. If we continue in like three years from now, absolutely, we're gonna have an issue. But I don't see this right now. I see us getting to that point of that five percent of what you need to be.
Well, I think previous years, our philosophy was almost more of a savings account. And I think we were encouraged to say, if you are taking in the school choice kids, obviously, you do it a year in advance, but you need to spend the money that you're taking in in those years because that's when you should be incurring the expense for those children. So I think, I mean, we got, we got a little used to the cushion. And it's not, it's easy to let go of that cushion.
Right.
Well, if something were to happen and you lose every single kid that you've school choiced into your district, boom, tomorrow, what are you gonna do if you spent the money? And that's, that was what the thought process was years ago. Now we're to the point where we can't do that anymore. We can't even try to be careful. We can only keep just enough in there that.
I mean, it's something that we honestly have to be looking at is if our numbers continue to expand the way they have since we originally did this. In our budget, we have one teacher eliminated somewhere beyond our sixth grade teacher. If we get to a point where, gee, these numbers are too big to consolidate a classroom, we have to ask, where does that money come from? Because you're talking about a forty thousand dollar change. You already have your budget approved, so where does that come from? And really, the number one place where it would have to come from is your school choice money for next year. It is that, that, that is a possibility, that that could happen. But we could end up somewhere more with grant money. So things that we were using in our general fund budget, we could end up putting in the grant money that we weren't thinking about. So there's that juggling game that we'd end up with. But we could end up having, I could end up saying to school committee, school committee, I, I might need to take thirty-five thousand more out of our school choice because we actually, with the numbers we have, we do need two classrooms in each grade level for this year. The census was very off from what we had. So that's a possibility. And that is, that's like one of those things that you say, you wanna make sure you have it in there in case for the future.
I mean, there's no E D, there's no emergency fund, there's no sludge fund.
No, that's it.
And so when something happens, then you have to have a plan. What was I gonna say? So the school committee, done it a couple of different ways, where you vote the bottom number of the budget. But we also used to vote the amount of school choice that is applied to that budget. And is that what, I mean, I would like to do that, but I would like to hear from you and Andy, you know, what.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, I've seen it done both ways. The one thing, I guess, so just carry out superintendent Exum scenario about needing an additional teacher. Does that mean then that she comes back and asks for the school committee to vote the funding of our school choice? And that's, that's fine, you know, so if you do that, then yeah, that's, that's fine. You know, but the other sources, the circuit breaker and the other ones are administrative control.
Well, I mean, I've seen it both ways with different superintendents, and that's why I was asking.
Oh, yeah.
There's no right or wrong either way. The only difference is that if school committee doesn't vote that, then that allows us, should something like this come up, and I just tell you, oh, by the way, this is where it's coming from. If you do it that way, then we can't touch that three hundred and anything above the three hundred, which that's fine, too, like just bring it to school committee anyway. You know, we're all, our funding's coming from that through all the year anyway. So whatever the school committee prefers to do.
Carol?
I did have another question about the special subject area teachers. They're being cut. Are the, the program's gonna stay the same?
Yes.
So this year, we have gym. And then each grade has seven weeks of health in addition to the gym class. We will continue to have those seven weeks of health? Because I, I just heard that it was gonna be part of the health. So you'd lose seven week, I mean, you'd lose seven weeks of gym.
I don't want to speak on behalf of the curriculum alignment of what's happening with that. That's something that Carol.
In, in the hea, with health and phys ed, you were combining.
Right, oh, they're combining, so there you go.
So it is gonna be seven weeks less of gym. So the program isn't going to stay the same then, right? Because right now, we have gym.
Right, there won't be an additional health component piece.
So that's being, that's being.
Right, rolled into the, into the phys ed time.
No, it's not let go. It's become part of the P E program. And actually, the middle school and high school do it that way currently.
Right, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is that you have, if it's gotta be part of the program, then there's seven, you gotta give up those seven weeks somewhere, right? For health, I mean, you have to teach health, those seven weeks. I guess that.
So I don't think we've had that conversation yet about how we're going to actually do the health piece of it other than we would combine it into the time the phys ed teacher would be there as well. Another option is to teach it in the classroom. To have it, in the past, it's been, it's been the classroom teacher's responsibility to do the health component. It may roll into that as well. So I don't have a decision on the table right now. I mean, that's not my call entirely, so, but I, it would definitely.
But it would be different that it was.
Right, it's not gonna be extended on to the phys ed teacher's time.
Okay.
So the school choice, amount of school choice money is three hundred thousand dollars that is going to be applied to the budget, okay?
I actually would like to say that if you're gonna vote that, if you decide to do that, that you just say that it doesn't exceed three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
In other words, it might be two fifty.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So I just want to make sure that you say just that it doesn't exceed two.
Got it.
That would be my recommendation. Okay?
Can we close?
Right.
Can we close the public hearing there?
Yes, just declare it closed.
You do a, you do a motion?
Okay, do I have, here a motion to close the public hearing.
So, can I second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're working on the approval of payroll and pay awards. The consent agenda includes the March twelve open session minutes and March twelve executive session minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
To. Sorry, executive session?
They're both for the same date, but one's executive session, one's open session.
I just saw a typo on the open session.
I had a couple, too. I, I kind of, but if it's the same one, is it the same one that perhaps, Christina or I?
Oh, do you have a count?
I did.
Oh, on the business side?
The superintendent Exum is recommends.
Yes, yes.
And I'm just gonna strike the is out of there.
Yeah, great.
Now, I had a question, well, or a suggestion, I guess, for the motion to go into executive session. I believe Julie Blumen was here, and she should be included in the call vote.
I know. School committee does the vote to go into executive session. Select board does not, is not part of the meeting.
But she's considered a member of the school committee when she's negotiating, so that's, that was my question.
Right, but she wasn't in the, when you did your motion to go in, she wasn't part of the meeting board here.
Okay.
She is in the meeting, but not here.
Okay, so, so the executive session minutes that, I don't think there's a copy here or anything, but
I have one.
I was just wondering if those were correct in adjourning and all that stuff.
Yes, because Ms. Blumen actually left the meeting at nine twenty P M.
That's right.
And it's stated in here, so, right.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, then, so with the suggested changes, the opposed, we have a motion and a second. And so is there anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.
Chris, I'm just gonna give you this so you can sign. Executive session minutes?
Communications. Petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda. Same thing, doesn't it?
Feels like it, but.
So reports. Do we, do we have a C P E C representative or a report? No, okay. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I can give you a, an update on the building committee meeting. The last meeting they had was on March thirteenth. They're actually having another meeting this week, this Thursday. However, at that meeting, they discussed the process of the project. When the architect, originally, when they had the building open, there were over four thousand items that were on a punch list. At March thirteenth, they had reported that there were eleven hundred items at the punch list. And just recently, there are under six hundred items on the punch list. So they're getting there in that new Tohonto building. So they, they continue to walk through weekly. And we actually have, Management Solutions has been attending the meetings that happen at the trailer on Wednesday afternoons to give us the updates as he comes back. So that's, they're moving in forward progress. However, at the meeting, they did express, P M A specifically expressed their frustration with C T A at this point in time, that they would like to see more subcontractors following through with the projects more expeditiously. The excavation company, they came through in the demolition. Most of you saw in the paper that the demolition has started yesterday. I went into, I went to the school and they, I was sitting in Diane's office and all of a sudden, in the middle of a meeting, we felt the rumble and we said, the last of the building just went down. And when we went, we looked and the, the entire building was down except for in the gym, the wall that had the scoreboard. So it was really cool. I was able to take a couple of pictures. It was kind of neat to see everything down. And all that's standing was the, the wall with the scoreboard. That's since been down, so they're, they're going very quickly in trying to get that, that demolition and so forth. And moving quickly so we can start getting the fields and, and the parking lot all set up. Also, I would like to thank Michael Riddiger from Unique Media Systems for setting up our television equipment and at Tohonto in the new studio. And W B A C had agreed to pay for half of the television equipment for the new studio. So that was, that was great for the whole broadcast, we'll, we'll, with W B A C's channel. And I know that Bill here also had gone over and met and saw what kind of systems that put in place. And just tonight before the meeting, he and I were talking about some things that we can do to get Berlin cable accessible and ready for Tohonto. So that'll be great. Also, you know, after the building committee meeting, like I said, Bill Anderson met with Peter Mackey, who's our media teacher, and they also determined how to get that, get that going. We're hoping to get that done sooner than later, so I gotta follow up a little bit more and see what we need to do. The school attending children, you have enclosed some documents in regards to the school attending children for all three. And one, one piece that we did notice that was an error was the, just to clarify, is the school choice out numbers were inaccurate on the reporting. In two thousand eleven and twelve, Berlin had thirty-five and Boylston seventeen. And we corrected our two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen for a choice out. Berlin had thirty-seven and Boylston eighteen. And I just want to clarify that that's actually for K to twelve. So I know, because what I just spoke about here was not that number. But if you look at the numbers total of Berlin-Boylston from last year, you had eight hundred sixty-five students, and you currently have eight hundred fifty-seven students. So that's your actual number of students you have in your towns themselves is a little bit smaller. So that's not, not necessarily just what you have in our school, but as your, as your total.
Can you, can you ask?
Yep.
Can you ask Cheryl or whoever's done this to send us an updated one?
This is the updated one that you have here.
Oh, okay, good, good.
So what I mean by a mistake was that in Boylston, if you recall at the region meeting, it was much higher. It's actually eighteen there. So it, what, what happens is in Berlin, you're members of the Volk's School. And in Boylston, they're not members of the Volk's School. So Cheryl forgot to deduct the choice out numbers from Boylston's numbers. In other words, they were counted twice.
Okay.
So that's where the error was. She forgot to do it that way. So that's the, the school attending. You also have, in regards to Berlin Memorial, you have the actual enrollment as of October. So what you had in this first packet that I, that I showed you, that we just went over, is actually as of January first. The other piece that you have in your packet that looks more like this, these were as of October first. So you can see where the differences lie in, in the. The other piece that you have in your packet that looks more like this, these were as of October first, so you can see where the differences lie in, in the two schools. The next item is the legislation proposals. These are just to let you know that MARS, which is the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, has proposed some legislative actions to be filed. One of it is the inter-municipal agreement that we had discussed with Dr. Hammond previously at the regional meeting. However, they're looking at the possibility of kind of changing the wording a little bit to allow staff members that are shared in more than one district, such as what we have here, and having the two towns through a municipal agreement to have an agreement to allow those staff members to be, in other words, if they are point three in one building and point three in another building, they're not point three employees, they're point six employees, so they should be able to receive benefits. And they currently aren't, if they are point three. So that, that's one of the municipal agreements, and that's one of the legislation. The other legislation is really more or less about regional transportation is a big piece. Right now, in the regional schools, transportation, you receive sixty percent reimbursement. In municipalities and the towns, you don't receive reimbursement for that. Currently, it's at sixty percent of the cost of transportation. So for a small town like Berlin, without transportation reimbursement, it's about ninety thousand dollars that you don't get from that reimbursement at sixty percent. They're looking at funding it for up to a hundred percent, it just has not happened yet. The next piece is fingerprinting. For any employee that starts employment as of September first of two thousand thirteen, they will be required to get their fingerprinting as part of their query forms and query checks. Employees will be expected to pay for their fingerprinting. If they are a teacher right now, the preliminary idea is that a teacher would pay fifty-five dollars for that fingerprinting, and a paraprofessional would pay thirty-five dollars. People have asked about, does this go into negotiations, does this become part of contracts? And the answer is no, this is a state mandate, there is nothing that any of us can do about it, and so therefore, it should never be in local negotiations. So that is still in discussion. Just to give people an idea, in our new building, we have over eight hundred people that we have had to do query checks for. So I can only imagine if we have to do fingerprinting, and I don't know if we now are gonna have fingerprinting done in our office. Do we collect the money? Do we do this? Does this happen at a leased station? Does this happen at a, the post office? Does it happen at registry of motor vehicles? Where does this happen, and where's this machine fingerprinting and, and all of that? So I try to keep the fingerprinting conversation at a minimum in our office, because people don't wanna hear about it. But I will say that in the state of Massachusetts, we are one of the only states that don't do that. The positive of fingerprinting is that if we have somebody that comes to us from another state, our queries right now are only looking at you in your state of Massachusetts. So if a teacher, for example, has only been in our state for four or five years, they're doing a query based on those last four or five years. Whereas with the fingerprinting, this becomes a national query, and it will look at anybody's records anywhere they've been for their duration of their life. Fingerprinting is only done once in a lifetime, but query checks are done every three years. So that one-time fee is, is what's done.
I just, out of curiosity, why fifty-five, why thirty-five? Like, isn't everybody's fingerprint the same? Lost? I just, I don't know, it just seems like a silly.
It's a very good question, and, and we've all asked the same thing, like, shouldn't it just be one set fee? I have no idea, this is all state.
What's something?
This is all state doing this, I have no idea. It's, I don't know. This is the thing, we need to have this ready for September first. However, we don't know where the fingerprinting's done, we don't know what the final, final pieces are. We have all these questions that even the House of Representatives and the senators are really trying to even figure out the answers to let us know. So they're still in the works of figuring it all out, but we have to implement it as of September first. And the other piece is that private schools and public schools and charter schools, and every school needs to be doing this.
I, I get the reason for it, but.
Yep. Yep, there's so many onions, I know, thirty-five, fifty-five, I don't know.
May I make a comment about that too? I had asked at the regional meeting about volunteers, because volunteers are included in the law, and B M S has tons of parent volunteers. You're gonna have thirty-five dollars, but I saw on the law, it says unsupervised and direct. So that makes it like, parents going in with a teacher to volunteer in the classroom with reading or something, it seems to me like they might not have to do this fingerprinting and just the query, per usual, but someone who's doing maybe a late actor school program that they're running, most would need fingerprinting.
And if they're gonna start making distinguishing things like that, it's going to drive our business offices and everything just insane. It should just be a blanket, this is what you need to have done. So, anyway, and then regionalization update, just very quickly. I want to announce that D E S C has officially approved the regional agreement that will go into effect as of July first, two thousand thirteen. So it's official that we will have our sixth grade students as part of the region up at the middle and high school for next year. The roof and boiler update, on March fourteenth, we met with the roofing company and many members from the town of Berlin, and Management Solutions also, to review the proposed changes that need to be done for the roof. We also discussed the boiler and the rationale behind getting a new boiler for the system due to its lack of warranty and the amount it would cost to fix the system. And also, the meeting was actually held to answer any questions that the town of Berlin may have had regarding the requested changes, and to make sure that what Judy Boomen is really trying to do to align with the green schools, with the green community grant, that what we do would be in alignment with what she was doing. And I think that was a good conversation that we had and nice discussion. People were able to actually see the boiler, see the pictures of the roof, and actually have some, some good, I thought we had some really great discussions there. I know, Bill, you were there as well, and I think it was just good discussion that we were able to have, to hear the rationale behind the recommendations, and have the actual company there to, to review that with us. So I appreciate everybody's efforts on that. We have an anticipated last day school that I would just like to state is that for the town of Berlin, the school committee would vote to agree the proposed last day of school for Berlin Memorial to be on June twenty-fourth. However, we would put that officially on the next school committee meeting, because we'd like to do that after April vacation, just to cover ourselves. So right now, it's tentative, June twenty-fourth, but we're just gonna say after April vacation that, you know, but just to give you a heads up that that's where we are at this point in the year. So we'll put that down as a future agenda item, Christine.
What day of the week is that?
I believe that's a Monday. It's the last, the last day of school, and that's what we're hoping to make it stay, and not go any later, but we're, we're waiting till after April vacation. Principals' report.
So I wanted to start this evening by talking to you about school council. We did meet on April second, the school council, and we selected Tracy Freitas and Molly Nozek as our school, as our school council chair people. And we also have the first draft of our vision statement, which we shared with you in your packets. This, this conversation around our vision statement for our school really started at the end of last year, and as we lost a few members and gained, gained others, we continued with this work, as you know, we, we worked on our mission statement last year, and we thought this was time to really, as so much is changing in, in our district, we thought this was a very good time to capture the vision of our school for the next several years out. So we, we spent a great deal of time working on this, on this statement, and we're putting it out to you to take a look at. I presented it to the staff earlier today, and we'll bring it to Link tomorrow. And just to get your feedback and thoughts around what, what we focused on, it, it's a really interesting process. It seems so simple when you see the, the language down on paper, but please know that every word was weighed when, when we wrote this. And we wanted to make sure it reflected truly what, what we wanted our vision to represent for the school. So I don't know if anybody in the school council wanted to speak, Debbie Ulyss is also here from representing the staff, and Bed Fletcher, as, as intern for us this year for principalship, has also joined us at the council meetings. So Tracy, or Debbie, you.
I just wanted to add, one of the things that we talked quite a bit about when we were doing this, was especially the first bullet item, empowering staff to utilize current best practices to promote high academic achievement. And what we had talked a lot about is whether in order for the staff to utilize current best practices, they need to be knowledgeable about them and trained in them. And so we tossed around many things about professional development and training and that. And in the end, we decided that we would take that, that piece would go in our, in the, the school improvement plan, as like one of the action items we would need to meet this vision. So I just want you to be aware, we did think about that, we definitely want that as part of our, where we're going. But we just, after much discussion about it, we decided that would be best as an action step in the school improvement plan. That's to come. Down the road.
So this particular, are you saying the bullet?
Well, the first one, we said empowering staff to utilize current best practices to promote high academic achievement. In order for, to expect staff to utilize current best practices, they have to know what they are, be knowledgeable about them, have the opportunity to see other teachers using them, all of those types of things. And those are the types of things that we would include in the school improvement plan as an action item that we would need in order to accomplish this piece of the vision. The other thing that we wanted to, and we looked at lots of vision statements, we're putting this together, Carol provided us with vision statements from many schools. And many schools were very much focused on, I'll, I'll use the term benchmark assessments, very specific academic measurements. And one of the things that we as a school council feel strongly about, and what we want the identity of B M S to be, is building a well-rounded individual. And that's going to mean different things to different students. We expect every student to reach their potential, we have that in here, but it's also, you know, valuing the diversity that is unique to all individuals. Everybody is different, everyone has different learning styles, and that was just one of the things that we wanted to kinda capture, that we want every, every student to be their best. And that's not always measured on an MCAS test. And that was just one of, and that's why we didn't specifically put anything in there about any standardized test, because we wanted to give, make it broad enough so it would capture the well-being of every student.
So is this something that, does the vision get voted on by the school committee? We just don't do much of it.
Now, the, the school committee does not vote on, you know, it's, it's gone.
We are, I mean, we're talking about, you know, at the, at the district governance meetings, vision, mission, and we're gonna work on all these things, and.
Right, and the school committee, really technically what happens is the school committee has an overall vision, and they have goals, and they have core values, and they have their vision. And typically, a vision statement is built off of the school committee's vision, but right now, the school committee is in the process of developing their vision. So I commend the school councils and so forth moving forward with that, but they need to also understand that that may need some changing and tweaking after the school committee in May is really, vote, May eighth is when they're doing their workshop to talk about their vision and their goals and their, and so forth. So it might be in alignment with it, but it's more of less like, you know, it's kinda happening more in reverse, because as your governing body, as your school committee, they focus on the, the goals, and they focus on their district mission. And the district is more the public schools as a whole, because they're Union Sixty, actually, that is, that is looking at, you know, you're looking at not just the region, but the union, which is all of them, looking at their focal point. So I think that's great ideas, I think, you know, the school committee has, has been collecting a lot of resources as they're developing their own. We're continuously giving them our resources, and so this could be another resource as well. And they also have the school improvement plans. What's happened over time, Chris, is that they used to have, school councils used to have to come to the school committee to present their school improvement plans, and school committees used to have to vote to approve them. That's no longer with the new legislation, that's no longer a requirement.
No, it's not a requirement. However, I think M A S C does say that they think you should vote to approve, but.
I, I probably would disagree with you on that respectfully, because what I see is that you get told about them, and you get acknowledged about them, and you get updates if they happen from year to year. You'll get an update from you, the school council, or the principal, of what's happening in that school improvement plan, but it's not something that the school committee would vote on. It used to be, and then the legislation changed, and I know that the M A S C has gone back and forth with that. Just recently, I received something from Tom Scott about how there's some proposals out there of bringing that back in, but nothing has officially been passed at this point. So that, that's why I'd say that I know it's out there for discussion, and I know that's what they would like to see, but because it's not law, or it's not required anymore at this point. But I know that they're bringing it forward to revisit it.
Yeah, because I think it was actually sort of an error that it got lost somewhere. But wouldn't you, wouldn't you really wanna have the support of your school committee for your, 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 your school council goals? Don't you wanna know that they're behind you?
I agree, I, I agree with your statement, but I'm just saying that right now, it's not
Right.
required to vote on at this point. Nice to the pot.
Yep.
So what would, what, what would happen, since we're going through this governance project, that we come up with our vision statement, missions, goals, and all that? And then we came to this, you're doing a good job, and obviously with your, what if we felt, or between the two of us, there weren't some things that maybe would be aligned or didn't mesh so well? How would we deal with it, or what would we do?
Because we don't vote on it.
Right.
Yep, so what would happen is, first of all, a district overall, as a school governing body, you have a vision that what you want to see. It is up to the principal at the end of the day to make sure that that vision statement that they develop in their school improvement plan is in alignment with what your goals are. It doesn't have to be the same vision, but it has to be in alignment with your vision, and they can have their own vision. Each school can have their own vision within their school improvement plan, but it has to be able to be filtered from the school committee. And the, and the super, and the, and the principal at the end of the day works with their councils to make sure that that's the case. The principal gives the school improvement plans to me, or your superintendent, and the superintendent also verifies that. If I say, Carol, what are you doing? This is not okay, she has to bring it back to the school council, it's not considered approved. So that's really the process it goes through. Yep. Sorry, so go ahead, Carol, you lead.
The next piece I wanted to mention was that the members of Link were, continue to be interested and concerned about putting sound buffers in the cafeteria, and they, they kind of took up the charge of doing this, and began investigating companies to do this work, talking with some of the town folks about, about getting these in the cafeteria. And in, in the process, we've had, Dennis Ferbe has been speaking with one of our Link representatives to sort of spearheading this effort, and that person has also been in charge with a company in Pennsylvania who makes the sound buffers, so we've had a chance to look at those just online. We don't have any prices yet, because you have to choose the type of material that you want on the, on the, the clouds themselves, the pieces that drop down, very similar to what's in Tejantou now. We need to explore a couple other options as far as looking into costs for this, and we do know that we'd have to go out to bid if it was over five thousand dollars. But right now, we're kind of in the But right now, we're kind of in the stage of getting a sense of what, what we would need in that room, given the, given the square footage, I guess, of the room. The other pieces, we had an offer by the town inspector to come over and take a look as well. He has a, a piece of equipment that can get the sound decibels, so he was going to collect that for us. So he's, he's probably stopping by this, this week to, to collect that from our loudest group in the cafeteria. So it's a real, it's, it's been nice to kind of see the collaborative effort to get, to get this done. I think that some of the town officials did, did speak to the fact that it's not just about the children in the cafeteria at lunchtime, it's also as far as utilizing that room as a community space as well. And the issue with having it just so, I guess hollow, for lack of a better way to describe it. So, so we're just, we're moving forward with that as far, as far as getting pricing on that. I just want to make sure that, I know that the fellow who came to our roof boiler meeting said that he also does things like sound buffers in the cafeteria. And I don't know what direction, this has come to the school committee many times. I don't know what type of thing you're looking at. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that this fellow also did some type of sound buffers.
So what they were looking at, Chris, is, you know, if you go into our auditorium at Tohonto, there's the clouds that hang from the ceiling. So if you don't remember, just when you, the next time you go in, if you look up, and there's, there's clouds, it almost looks like, it's like fabricated boards that are suspended from the ceiling.
I think that's what this guy was talking about, too.
Right. And that's what they're looking into doing. That's really what it is. And so that's really the sound buffers.
Right. And we don't, again, we don't, we need to get an estimate of the price and also based on the type of material, how many we would need to have. And those are things all need to be recommended to us, and then we'll go forward and look at the cost. So we, that's, that's the space that we're in right now. Might, I mean, it might do, it might be a good idea to even check with this guy and see if they're competitive. Because it sounds like what he was talking about with me when we had that meeting that night, he came in and looked at your cafeteria. Right. It's good to know. I mean, we have to get a few estimates on anyway, so that, that's good. I think I know who you mean, so. Okay, thank you. I also wanted to mention DARE graduation that took place on Wednesday, April 3rd. And we had 26 DARE graduates in the fifth grade, very special ceremony. We honored Chief Road, who was retiring at the end of April, with a lovely plaque and a T-shirt and a mug for him. And we had a lot of fun with that. Superintendent Ekstrom did come and spoke as well. So it was, it's a really nice evening. And we're, we're really grateful that the town supports the DARE program. As Officer Baum spoke to us about, many, many just, our towns don't have a DARE program anymore and is run pretty much on a shoestring budget. But it's, it's, we feel it's very important for our students. They learn quite a bit from that experience. So we're grateful that Officer Baum has given us time to, to teach this every year. The next piece is curriculum, as Nadine mentioned earlier. We, we are looking at a writing program. We had about 16 staff members and administrators coming together to Tohonto today to see one of the writing programs, which is called Empowering Writers. We're also looking at another one potentially called Being a Writer. We've noticed with Empowering Writers, however, there's the top 10 schools in, in ELA in Massachusetts in the MCAS result, the majority of them have been using Empowering Writers. So we did get, we're, we're just very, just coming off of this presentation today. We've had a chance a little bit as administrators to talk about that. We need to do more researching around costs of that as well, and training that would be involved if we implemented that program next year. So we're going to continue with our ELA work after vacation. We have staff members getting together for that in the grade levels. We have special educators getting together to look at the math work that's been done already on Atlas Rubicon. We are having our guidance counselors and the school psychologists meeting with the transition taking place for next year. Who else do we have?
Specialists.
And our specialists, right. Our specialists are going to be inputting their units on Atlas Rubicon, which is music, art, biz ed. So we're busy this morning. I also just quickly wanted to put a plug in for our art show, and that's Thursday, it's coming Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Gail Joseph and volunteers have been working very hard to, to align the halls with beautiful, beautiful artwork. And she does a great job with that every year. So please come out, and it's free, it's just a beautiful night of sharing the children's artwork and appreciating it. So it's a great, the highlight of the year.
Great.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Business items, policy GB EBC gifts to and solicitation by staff.
Okay. So what I'm bringing forward to the Berlin School Committee has actually already been voted and approved by the regional school committee and was brought forward by the policy subcommittee. This is really a review based on, and changes based on the new Code of Ethics regulations, looking at the parameters. And I can tell you just really quickly on this, this policy, what has changed is if you look at the class gifts, it states here, and I'm, I'm reading this for the sake of the public so that they understand this policy. Class gifts, there's a specific exception to the prohibition against accepting gifts worth $50 or more when the teacher knows only that the gift is from the class and not from specific donors. The class gift per calendar year valued up to $150 for several class gifts in a single year with a total value of up to $150 from parents and students in a class may be accepted provided the gift is identified only as being from the class and the names of the givers and the amounts given are not identified to the recipient. The recipient may not accept an individual gift from someone who contributed to the class gift. It is the responsibility of the employee, of the teacher, parent, whomever, to confirm that the individual offered, offering such gift did not contribute to the class gift. That's one component. The other piece that's important is gifts for school use, because this happens quite often. You know, we have a wish list, and parents will bring in tissues, pencils, notebooks, papers, what have you. It's very important that gifts given to a teacher solely for classroom use or to purchase classroom supplies are not considered gifts to an individual employee and are not subject to the $50 limit. However, an employee who accepts such gifts must keep records and receipts documenting that money or gift cards were used for classroom supplies. So when a teacher receives these items, they need to have an itemized documentation of what they received that actually should be submitted to Carol or to the building principal, so that they have a record. Those gifts also include books. So if they receive, like, we'll have the Scholastic Book Fair, for example, and when parents want to support and give a gift to the classroom, it's not going to that teacher, it's going to the classroom. So if a teacher were to leave or move to a different grade, that book belongs to stay in that classroom, because that does not belong to that teacher. It belongs to that classroom. And so, and, and that also needs to be documented, that that book was received, or how many books, or whatever the item may be that's donated to the classroom. That needs to stay in that classroom. So those are the pieces that were changed, and that's actually due to the fact of the new Code of Ethics and regulations. So my recommendation would be for the school committee, the Berlin School Committee, to vote to approve the changes that were made to this policy.
Basically, I think the policy was actually MASC's policy.
That is correct.
I mean, we didn't stray too far from that at all. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve GB EBC, GB EBC, EBC. As recommended.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Anything else to be said?
I think they're all laughing about all the M and M gifts.
You better write down those.
I said I have to write down every time a kid comes in, every little bag of M and M.
Is it for personal use, or is it for the classroom?
It is for personal use. It's my lunch, but.
Not through the camera?
All right. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The FY14, we've been updated, we're all set, I believe. And the vote is required to support the Berlin budget. Do, so, papers.
Do you have the amount?
Yeah.
$0.55?
$27.
$27? Yeah. And.
An additional $300,000 on school choice.
Yes, I, so do I hear that motion?
So.
Okay.
Are you okay with that? You got it?
And not to exceed $300,000 for school choice?
Right.
And did you get the amount, Christine?
$2,505,155.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second.
I second it.
Anything else? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Appointment of the Reed Tyler Scholarship Subcommittee. But I think we did already review the application.
Well, the only thing.
Or was there something else?
The date. I know that it got out late, and then Connor wanted to do it. It's like he hasn't even decided where he's going, and we need to send him a bill.
Right.
So the earliest, it might be May 1st.
At the very latest?
Well, I mean, earliest, right?
Okay.
I don't know. So whatever you think. I know that Cheryl suggested that they're just going out.
Yeah, they're just getting to the schools or something.
Correct.
Are we doing this late, or is this something that needs to be adjusted, or? I did see the email saying that we may have to move the date. I wasn't sure why, though.
How much time do you think?
When is the deadline now?
Right now, it's April 26th. But when did you get them all out? Just recently.
I don't know. Nadine, do you know when Cheryl may have gotten the Reed Tyler Scholarship applications out to the different places, or?
I don't know.
October 10th.
Does that, but I can ask her.
Until April 10th, at the earliest.
Well, it's tomorrow.
Sure. Right, it's just coming out. Yeah. I don't know if it's on the Tohonto website. It suggested that it was on the Toh, I got an email suggesting that it was already on the Tohonto website. And when is graduation? June 2nd. June 2nd. So we need to, I would say no, if you're going to move the date, no more than a week after that. After the. What is the 26th? Because we need time to read them all. Yep. We have to read them all and then meet as a committee and make decisions.
And we're supposed to vote to accept the recommendation. But we can always set up a meeting, maybe 15 minutes here or there, you know, after a meeting, just to do that.
We could just extend it a week. So May, or April 26th is a Friday, we could go to May 3rd. And then seniors graduating this year will definitely know where they're going, which would be helpful.
Why is this an issue this year? Do we not realize this?
I don't know what it was last time.
It was like the last of May, I think.
The last of May?
I mean, last of April, sorry. All right. I mean, that's fine with me. So are we agreeing that the date for submission for these should be May 3rd?
Yeah, I guess my only question is, is that information about the extension going to be equally?
Disseminated.
Disseminated. I guess I'm just thinking if someone might be disadvantaged by rushing to get it in, or maybe it doesn't matter, but.
Do you want me to, maybe I can talk to Cheryl and, and see whether she can, oh gosh, you know, I don't know if she, I don't think she makes hard copies, do you? She could probably change the soft copies, the dates on them.
Well, the guidance might just want to send out a follow-up email letting them know that the date changed.
Okay.
Because I did get an email saying it was due April 26th.
Okay.
But more time is always better than the other direction.
All right. So would you like me to talk to Cheryl and, if we agree that it's a May 3rd due date, then see if that can be renewed by another email, or just changing the soft copy?
Do we need to vote that, or can we just say we're comfortable with changing the date if we need to?
I don't know that we really need to vote on that. We do need to just appoint this subcommittee, and I'm going to let you bring me up to date.
We did find a willing volunteer by the name of Maureen Norval, who agreed to help us out.
Good. Awesome.
Good. I think should be an excellent addition.
Okay. So I believe as, as been done in the past, that it's, it's all right with the two of you, then I would appoint Angela and Carol Young and Maureen Norval to the subcommittee for the Reed Tyler Scholarship. Okay? And I think we've, what's that?
Do we know the amount of money that?
We do.
Do we?
Well, I got it off the top of my head.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that. Just as long as we have it for when we.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we just need to know that's all.
Right. All right. So school committee comments, future agenda items.
Future agenda items, we talked about doing the vote for the end of the year.
And the last set of minutes that I read, are we, where, I know we had put in those minutes that we were going to do like assistant principal, curriculum coordinator, job descriptions. And can you just bring us up to date on that?
Yes, please. Thank you for bringing that up. I did not recommend an assistant principal position at this point to bring forward for job description, because that's not the recommendation in the current budget.
Okay.
Curriculum director position, it would actually be brought forward to the, to the regional agreement first. And so we haven't done any of that at this point.
So how does that work, then, with the job descriptions, if they're working in all three districts? Should we vote those, or?
No, it's really more for the, the union, actually.
Union 60.
The Union 60, not here.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that makes sense. So those are off the list. Good. One last thing to do. I didn't know, Angela, if you wanted to, were you at the bus meeting last night?
I did go.
Okay, then I guess I, I didn't go. But you did sort of bring me up to date. Was there anything else you wanted to add about what went on at the bus meeting?
Yeah, I just, the bus meeting was, I think, a good chance for a school committee to talk to other community at large. You know, we come to these meetings, we're pretty good about letting everyone ask questions and have comments. Really, it's in school committee meetings aren't set up for like a public forum sort of thing. So the bus meetings are good in that regard. So this particular meeting, since the governance project, the school committee is working on the visions and values, and part of what we've been told by our mentor, who's leading the governance project, is the commu, community helps supply those values to the, the school committee. So it's not just the six of us on the region committee. So that this was a chance for members in the community to share what they value in a school, in an ideal school. Just value, we weren't critiquing, critiquing whether schools had or didn't have values. It was just a chance for people to say their ideals, values, and visions for their education system.
That's good.
So I'll bring, we have, we have a list, and I'll bring, type up the list, and I'll bring it, probably send it out to the school committee beforehand, because I know I'll be thinking about our, what goals and visions we want to bring to that meeting in May 8th. So that's the plan.
Okay.
Angela and I did go to the FAC meeting this morning, and she gave a little bit of an update on the, whatever.
Intermunicipal agreement.
Agreement that we had talked about at the region. And then I think we're all set as far as capital. And the one thing I would just ask or request of Andy or Nadine is. And the one thing I would just ask or request of Andy or Nadine is that when we get to town meeting, it would be nice to have something written back up for the capital items that we're requesting from the school committee, so that we can stand up there and not look like fools. I mean, I think we can defend it, but it'd be nice to have, you know, just some bullet points or something for the items. And the other thing I was gonna ask is, Nadine, I know we talked at the Roof and Boiler meeting about having the fellows that were there come and speak at town meeting, is that something that...
Yeah, Andy, have you followed up with them on that for MASCs, they had said at that point in time?
I have not followed up, I thought they took it down.
I thought they did too, do you want to just confirm with them?
And, you know, if that's the case, then we probably just should, should let the moderator know that we'll have a little bit of a presentation or something.
Okay.
And I guess I'll talk to Cheryl about posting a meeting before town meeting for Berlin School Committee. Usually we post around 6, 6:00 or 6:30, in case there's anything we have to do before the meeting. In this case, we probably should be available for the special town meeting at 7:00.
Right.
Because we have an article. So maybe we need to post at, I don't know, 6:30 or 6:15 or something. Just in case we need to talk about who's talking about what, or whatever. Okay? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I just have the date of that, that town meeting?
I think it's...
It's the 6th.
May 6th.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we covered everything. Do we have need for an executive session? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.